Guys, if you just came in, there's agendas right up here next to Sharon. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:00 PM and I will now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. The first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, but before that, I would ask for a moment of silence for the horrific attacks in Israel and the innocent lives lost. So if you could all please stand for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item is approval of minutes from our regular meeting of October 4th. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Sean, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. You got a second?
Bobby got a split second ahead.
Can I add one correction? I think it was from my scribble. She had a hard time reading it. On the motion that I made last week, on the very top of page three, I said the School Facilities Committee as advisory. It says advising. It was advisory. Probably minute detail, but I just want to make sure it matches up with the audio. That's it. Thanks.
So you guys are okay?
Yep, as amended.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Next up is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. I don't have any changes, so I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. The next up is communications and correspondence, and we do have some residents from the Great Hill Pond area here tonight. And Rick Benson is here to explain the current situation, what's going on at Great Hill Pond with some invasives. And yeah, if you'd like to come up to the podium, yeah, perfect. And just state your name and address, please, when you come up. Thank you. And in your packets, you should have the material that Rick had sent to be included.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having us, or me. I'm Rick Benson. I live at 122 Great Hill Pond Road. With me are several members of what we call our working group, which are helping me with some of the issues that we're facing. I'm not going to ask them to introduce themselves, but there they are. So what I'd like to talk to you about today is some of the issues that we're facing on the pond and their impacts on the people that live there and others who enjoy the pond. We're not looking for any decisions from you all tonight. This is more just information at this point. But we may be back as things progress and, you know, about what we're heading towards. Just a couple of quick facts about Great Hill Pond. For those of you that don't know it, I've had various contractors in and out from time to time, and it's pretty remarkable how many people don't know about Great Hill Pond that actually live and have been in the area for a while. But anyway, Great Hill Pond is more like a small lake. It's about 70 acres. And it is actually owned by the State of Connecticut. A while back, the dam was sold by the town of Portland to the State of Connecticut, and they own the dam, so thus they own the pond. And that's important because they set a lot of the rules as to what can be done and not done there. There are about 50-plus waterfront homes and residents that surround the pond, as well as some town of Portland properties that abut the pond. The Middlesex Land Trust has property that abut the pond. And there's an area at the northern end of the pond that is leased to the veteran, the volunteer fire department number three of Portland, and they use it for like a membership into their social club. And they probably have 50 or 60 different families that have memberships in that. And they do lease it from the large property that's owned by the Nois School of Rhythm and Dance. They own a large 70-plus acres up in that area. And as I mentioned, the state itself has properties that come in and abut the pond. They have one area there where they allow people to carry in kayaks and small boats and fish and swim and that kind of stuff. And they, as I mentioned earlier, they do own the dam, and they do maintain it. And we'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later down the road. And actually, you probably know this from, I think, another meeting that Ryan introduced, mentioned when the beaver dams break, which they've done now twice this year, into this pond is where all that water flows. And that's its own set of issues, the beavers and the breaches that they cause. So anyway, the problem, back in the summer of '22, like two summers ago, I, we, and some others first noticed this long stringy weed that was starting to grow in the pond. And at that time, I actually sent a picture of that weed to this agency of the states called the Connecticut Agriculture Extension Service or something like that, CAES. And the biologist there identified it as curly leaf pond weed. It wasn't very prevalent at the time, and as we have later found out, its natural habitat is to die back as the pond water warms up. So it disappeared. No problem, we thought. But what it was actually doing at the time was planting its seeds, they call turions, which then begin to grow again and grow over the winter and then came back this time with a vengeance. And that little map that I passed out or gave out in your handbook, that's actually from a survey that was done by this biologist from the state. And he came out in June and identified the spots where this curly leaf pond weed was. And as you can see in that map, it overtook about half of the lake. And this is long, stringy, just gross stuff. And we also noticed, and it had been there before, but it had a much larger bloom, a second weed called fanwort. We'll talk a little bit more what those weeds are. They obviously cause serious disruption to people's ability to use the pond. Other people who would swim in the pond, their arms would get caught in this stuff, their feet would get caught in this stuff. It fouled boat motors to the extent that people wouldn't put their boats, you know, in the water. I didn't put mine in until the middle of July because it fouled the motors. We had people whose motors quit in the middle of the pond. It had to kind of be rescued. They tangled fishing lines. I mean, it's just a mess. So trying to get an idea. And it did cover at least half the pond at that time. And that, you know, seriously degraded people's ability to enjoy the pond. And also, the other thing is it just significantly reduced the recreational value of it and just the people's, you know, ability to use the pond. So that's kind of what happened. That's the problem. We're not alone in this. There's a lot of other ponds, lakes, all across the US, even in, you know, Canada, Europe, or whatever, that have various forms of invasive weeds. And this agency I mentioned, CAES, was actually established by the DE, it's not the DEP, it's actually a division of the Forestry Service, to begin to address this problem throughout the State of Connecticut. And locally, there are this particular weed, curly leaf pond weed and a variety of others that infest Buddhist Reservoir, Beisham Lake, Rogers Lake, Crystal Lake in Middletown, Williams Lake up in Ashford area, Bolton Lake. And it's been in the news from time to time, even the Connecticut River with, it's not the same weeds we have fortunately, but this stuff called Hydrela is infesting the Connecticut River. And all of these have established programs similar to what we're about to establish to address and manage the weeds on a going-forward basis. So what have we done? Well, like I mentioned, we started by identifying the problem in conjunction with the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station, CAES. The DEEP Fisheries Division, we involved them at one point because I'll talk to you a little bit about one of the options that we had for mitigating the problem. And the DEEP section called Dam Safety. We'll talk a little bit more about that as well. One other survey, in addition to the one that was in your packet, was conducted by the biologist and his team from CAES. And this second survey was done at the end of June. And what they're going to do is combine both of them together. We don't yet have the report from that survey. I don't have a map yet from that survey. It will, by the time they came out to do the second survey, the curly leaf pond weed that was depicted in that first map had once again disappeared. But it had, as it's in the past, left its seeds and turions. And unless we do something about it, it'll come back probably even with more of a vengeance than what we saw this past summer. But they will, in the survey they did, they'll do a complete review of all of the vegetation and some of the, you know, they dug up stuff from the bottom to find out what's in the bottom, and they'll look at some of the invertebrates and those kinds of things. So it'll be a complete survey, and we don't yet have that information yet. What we also did was we conducted two very large community meetings of people that are residents and other stakeholders from around the pond. And over in the library where we, we had over 70 people come to that meeting. At that time, the biologist from CAES did a presentation to the folks that kind of explained what was ahead of us, what some of the mitigation strategies were. He actually said that was one of the largest meetings that he had attended. So there is a, you know, large contingent of people that are very passionate about Great Hill Pond. And, you know, all of the people that attended there were very attentive to what was said. What we did kind of in between that meeting and the second meeting was research, a lot of what our mitigation strategies were. And we prepared, you know, we got people's emails, we set up a Facebook account that we used to tell people what we were investigating. The folks that are here now helped do a lot of that investigation to find out what our mitigation strategies were, what ones would work, which ones would not work. And that information was provided in between and then kind of culminated in this second meeting that again, we had in the library, and 50-plus people attended that one to just kind of review what we had found and to lay out what kind of what our strategy was going forward into 2023 and beyond. So we went through this process, as I said, in between, kind of researching all of the various options that we had for what we might do to take care and manage the weeds. And the biologist initially presented four major strategies. One is what they called harvesting. They can bring in these huge machines to kind of cut the weeds, harvest them, bring what they've harvested back to shore, dump them on the shore, go back out and do that. We eliminated that for a couple of reasons. One is that Great Hill Pond, and it gets its name from Great Hill, if you've ever been up in that area, there's huge boulders in the hill, several of which, a lot of which have rolled down into that eastern shore of the pond. And we have to navigate our boats around it and that kind of stuff. It also originally was a pasture, stone walls, some barbed wire, we're told, which made kind of getting at the roots of those leaves next to impossible. So harvesting was put aside. Now Buddhist Reservoir does do harvesting. But what they do is they bought their own machine, like a $50,000 machine, and they use it a couple of times a year to kind of, in a sense, mow. But much like you mow your lawn, weeds come back up. So that was kind of eliminated. One of the other options was to draw down the level of the water and do it in the late fall, to expose the weeds to potential freezing of the weeds, thus killing them. That presented initially some real good, well, sure, why not? That's probably the cheapest way. It probably would have been if it were to work. But it is totally, for some other reasons, subject to weather conditions. If we had a fairly warm winter like we had this past one, it wouldn't work because it wouldn't kill them. It's also subject to refresh. If we didn't get enough winter weather, the pond would not refresh. It just would not fill back up sufficiently. And then thirdly, several residents, some of them seasonal, some of them full-time, have shallow wells that they use for non-portable water. The risk to those wells could be significant, again, depending on weather conditions, refresh rates and all of that stuff. So we felt, no, we're not going to take the risk. It might not work. It might not refill. And people's wells would potentially run dry. The other one, and this became kind of an interesting one, was grass-eating carp. A lot of lakes, or some lakes, have used that. And these are called triploid carp, and they are sterile. And you introduce them, and after two, three, four years, they get very large. They are strictly herbivores. They have no teeth, and they eat the weeds. Thought like, well, maybe that's an idea, although it wouldn't be able to be effective for two or three years. This is where the Fisheries Division of this DEEP came into play. They require that some form of gating or fencing be put in place to prevent the carp from leaving the pond, going downstream, and getting loose. That brought in the Dam Safety Organization because that fencing would have to be either put on or in front of the dam. Here's where an interesting twist came into place. In talking to the manager of that section of DEEP, he said, "Well, your dam in its last inspection, which is in 2020, I believe, was rated hazardous and unsafe." That is, you know, public information. It's not a secret. Some people brought it up during our various discussions. And they had in place, or started to put in place, an RFP to repair the dam. That was like, oh. He said, "Well, because of that, no way are we going to allow you to put any kind of gating, fencing, or anything in front of that dam." And the process to get that RFP put in place and actually do the repair is two or three years out before it goes to the bonding process, the state legislature. So we were looking at two or three years. Oh, the other thing he did say is we can put the gating as part of the RFP. So that was kind of good news. But it was still two or three years for the legislative process and another two or three years. So we were five or six years out. Hence, that option was put aside, which left us with the last option, which was herbicides. For a while, we were just trying not to use the word herbicide because it creates a little bit of a new jerk reaction part of people. But as we researched it more, they, you know, assure us that, and people can't use the word safe. I mean, nobody wants to talk about an herbicide and label it safe. But the lowest level of safety, so to speak, that the federal EPA has is not of concern. The herbicide that we plan on using for the curly leaf pond weed is labeled, it's called Daiquat, and it's labeled as that by the EPA, not of concern. It also, the herbicides have two different herbicides needed. One for the curly leaf pond weed, the stuff that's depicted on your map, and the other one for fanwort. The curly leaf pond weed is applied and treated in the April timeframe. That's when it first starts coming up because this is a contact herbicide. It prevents the plant from, you know, using the sunlight to create chlorophyll and to chlorophyll. And so it has to be applied in April before plants its next set of seeds. The fanwort is a different kind of plant. It comes up during the summer and the treatment, again, a contact herbicide, kind of one and done because it all dissipates within a day or two. And that would be done in the late summer, you know, early September timeframe. Those are all applied by a company, and we have two that we're talking to, that are licensed by the state. Stuff has to be applied and by a licensed, you know, treatment company. And that treatment company has to apply to the state for a permit to do the treatment. There's quite a few different things that are up in play here. And the state will evaluate the final report by CAES as part of the treatment plan and the specific herbicides that are planned will be included in that application for a permit. So that all was explained in a few Facebook posts, actually, I think we did six of them, to the larger community, and that's what we talked about with that larger community at that other meeting that I mentioned. And there were questions about, you know, not so much how we came to the conclusion of an herbicide, but just questions about the herbicide. You know, how long is it, you know, does it affect fish? Does it, is it okay to drink? Is it okay to swim? All of that was answered within a day, one day. The answer is yes, you can do those things. The only thing that they ask you or recommend that you not do is water your garden with the water from the pond because it is something that, you know, is an herbicide and could affect your garden. And that, they say, wait five days. But you can swim in it, you can fish in it, you can drink it. All those other things are okay. But there was, there's some angst, but there was no real, you know, anger or anything like that. People understood that this was our other option. So I'll stop for a minute or two. I'm not sure if people have any questions yet as to far as what we've done so far. I mean, there's quite a few things left to do, but I don't know if anybody had any questions. If not, we'll see how it works. Okay. So what do we need to do in the near term? And what have we been doing short? One of the key things that we've done over the past month or so is establish a nonprofit organization, which we are calling Friends of Great Hill Pond, Connecticut, Inc. We have received the legal notifications that that has been accepted. We have a EIN, Employee, Er, Employee, yeah, Employee, Er, Identification Number, which is recently, as yesterday, I went to the bank and got a bank account, set that stuff up. And we're going to establish, you know, strict accounting for donations, payments, and all of those other things. Kind of that backroom administrative stuff that I actually made a living doing for 30-plus years. The other thing that is ahead of us, and this is absolutely critical, is fundraising. Then we have to do more fundraising. Then we've got to do more fundraising because these treatments are not cheap. You know, we've had estimates anywhere between $9,000 and $12,000 to do the treatments. So this is not an inexpensive process. That was also explained to the people at that community meeting. And now that we have the administrative structures in place, you know, we can begin to do that fundraising and do, intend to do so. We actually have another meeting of that larger group coming up November 1st. And that's when we're going to have to get real on doing fundraising. We'll have to hire one of these licensed herbicide treatment companies and sign contracts so that they can get busy doing what they need to do with getting their state permits set up. And then, assuming we can do sufficient fundraising, assuming the state permits are granted, then we will actually begin to apply the first of the herbicides, the stuff I called Daiquat earlier, in April of 2024. The other thing that's going to hopefully help us out The other thing that's going to hopefully help us out here is that the state has established a funding mechanism through what they call the Aquatic Invasive Species Stamp Act. Kind of a long name, but if you have a boat yourself or know somebody that does and how they register their boat each year, they get a year's stamp, 2023, 2024. They pay five bucks for that stamp. The money that the state collects by issuing those decals to be part of their registration, that funds this stamp act. And what happens is then organizations like ourselves, and I've been in touch with a variety of other ponds or other lakes that have been granted these, been granted these grants. You know, is an application process pretty extensive? What are your plans? It's not, you know, it does require that the organization, in our case, Friends of Great Hill Pond, have contributed to, you know, mitigate the weeds themselves so that the stamp act's not funding 100%. But we do plan on applying for one of those grants. It's a lengthy process. Couple of ponds, larger than ours, Lake Williams, it took them over two years before they were granted. But they eventually were granted. It's a, if you're not familiar with it, Lake Williams is about twice the size of Great Hill Pond. But they were granted thirty thousand dollars in that first year. So it's not impossible. So that's something that we will be working towards. And then, again, assuming we have the money and everything else, we'll be applying the herbicide to the areas affected by the other stuff called fanwort. That's not, we don't believe, but we'll find out more when we get the next maps. It's not as extensive as the curly leaf that's depicted in your map there, but, and it's still very much there. I was out doing some work on my deck this afternoon and looked a little bit more at the fanwort. So, you know, later in 2024 and beyond, it's kind of a repeat of what I just talked to you about now. They'll resurvey, how effective were the treatments that we did along the way, or this year, let me tell you, not this year, in 2024. And that will then determine what our approach will be in 2025 and beyond. But so, and that will involve, this is, I should say right up front, that this is not a one-and-done. The seeds that we talked about, the turions from the curly leaf, they stay in the bottom for two, three years. So what was deposited this year is going to definitely come up and treated next year, but, sorry, the week following, the stuff they put down this year will come up in 25 and so on. So it's going to be an effort, diminishing, you know, as we attack this stuff and begin to get rid of it. But nonetheless, it is not going to be a one-and-done event. So that's what I had to say there. Again, any questions at this point? Because I am going to touch on some of the other ancillary issues just for a minute or two.
Rick, the residents that are around there, what's the feeling from them? Are most in favor of doing the herbicides? Is it half and half? What's the consensus, I guess, if that was an option?
I would say, you know, in view of the other options, they were, I didn't get anybody saying no. That was at the meeting. Now, a couple of other spots, people around the pond. So it was more of a reluctant yes. You know, we wish the carp had worked.
But you have to do something and...
You gotta do something. I mean, people are like, just, I mean, they are very enthusiastic about taking care of this problem. Time will tell somewhat about to the, what extent will they be willing to write a check. It's going to be one of our key, you know, parameters. But yeah, there was, there was no angst at that meeting. It was like, okay, yeah, we gotta do this, so let's get on. Sure.
I have a family friend who has a cottage on a lake in New Hampshire, and they've had the same problem. And I know, and I kayak, and I'm very fastidious about cleaning the kayaks when I'm done. But is this the same kind of stuff, the fanwort and the curly leaf, that you can pick up on the bottom of a boat and if somebody brings it to launch at Great Hill can bring it to the lake or can take it from the lake and bring it somewhere else? I'm not thinking now, but I'm thinking down the road, once you get it clear, you want to keep it clean.
Well, the thing about Great Hill Pond is that people don't take their boats in and out. There's no...
Well, that's why I was asking. I know the lake well, but I wasn't sure. I know on the state, small state land and town land on the other side, I've seen people put kayaks in.
Yes, they do.
But I don't know, I don't think you get big boat, trailer boats in. It's probably just kayaks.
It is just kayaks or something that somebody can carry in, which is highly unlikely to transport something in. As far as taking it out, who knows? This fanwort has been, first showed up in a survey like this that they did back in 2006, but it has...
Spread.
Spread considerably. It spreads. It spreads more by cutting of it and moving it around. So people that have used their boats on the lake may have inadvertently cut it in their propellers and moved it around some. So that may, I think that's more likely. The person from the Fisheries Division of DEEP said what's likely to have caused initially the curly-leaf pond weed that comes in by seeds are waterfowl that have picked it up in other ponds or other lakes and brought it to Great Hill Pond. And as some of the residents will attest, that it was about three or four years ago, we started seeing geese. Coincidentally, whether it's coincidence or not, that's when we first started seeing the curly-leaf pond weed. Which kind of is one of the things that I wanted to mention as an ancillary issue. I think it's important that we kind of understand that if it is waterfowl, it can be transported to other ponds in Portland, the reservoir I bring up as an example. Probably at Job's Hill because Job's Hill is so deep and this stuff, you know, doesn't get to develop in anything more than, say, twelve or so feet. But so we have to be just, you know, cognizant that let's take care of it, protect other places. Just another thought on the dam, you know. Just this afternoon, because I thought it might be useful here, I talked to the person that is the head of the dam safety group, which is part of the DEEP, to find out the status of their RFP. Because some of these things kind of get bogged down in these kinds of things. But he assured me that it was active. He said they had an engineer out there just last week to kind of look at it again, that they have gotten some proposals to do the repair. And, you know, I didn't go into it too much as to what that repair might consist of. I know that one was done at Mudus Reservoir, some other places. The key, I think that, as I'm going to talk more to some of the community and residents around that is, is that going to involve a drawdown while they fix the dam? And when I originally talked to this person, he said, "Well, it depends. It can be a little bit more expensive if they have to put some kind of temporary dam in front of the dam as it's being repaired." But that was up in the air. So that, a little bit unnerving as to whether, how that would actually be accomplished. The other kind of ancillary issue that comes up from time to time is doing water quality, water safety testing at the pond. And, you know, we are going to put a little bit more pressure next year on Chatham Health to try to develop more of a program and do that at least once during the year. And we may also involve having some of the residents do some testing. I know the Noyes School of Rhythm and Dance, they did some testing on their own last year and found some minute amounts of stuff. I can't even remember what it was. But it was not of anything of concern, and one test was done during the year by Chatham Health, and they found no problem. And then the last thing is the beavers. It is problematic for us. I think, just, I'm not a biologist, I was an accountant, so take this for what it's worth. I do think some of the nutrients that came off of the pond may have helped make the weeds more aggressive. Who knows if that's true or not? But it is, it is, I mean, and it's dangerous. I mean, this stuff just careens, cascades along that north end of the pond and probably actually puts more pressure on the state-owned dam. So that's pretty much what I had to say. Again, if any other questions you might have, I thank you for your time. And we'll see how things go and may come back and report again as things progress. Thank you all. Any last questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very much, Rick.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
Lot of work.
I'll just add on the beaver dam situation. We did have another break a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, God, really?
At the lake again. And so this is, this is very concerning because now it's happened three times in the past fifteen, sixteen months. And every time that it does happen, it washes out the road when Rick says that it cascades. He's not kidding. I mean, it could severely injure someone if they were on the road when that dam breaks.
That's the stream up by around Company Three picnic grounds where it comes down through?
It's up by Mecho-Masic, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, the Middlesex Land Trust now owns the property where the beaver dam is located. And I just had a conversation with them today about it. More to come on this. We're working on it, but we have to fix this because it's a, it's a public health hazard, you know, having this potential ongoing. So more to come, but just want to let you know we're working on it. All right. So thank you. Thank you, Rick. That was great. Yeah. We're on Zoom too, so.
Take your shoes off at home and log back in.
Oh, yeah. I meant to ask you, is that on or off? It's on? Okay. Okay. I'm going to try my best to make it. Thank you, Rick. Okay. All right, great. So we'll move on to item six on the agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Come on up, please, sure. Just state your name and address, please.
Kitchery and Ser Nikki, 435 Main Street. I'm here because I was just kind of surprised at what I just heard. So I took from what the gentleman said that you could take, I could take my kayak up there and use the pond. Is that correct?
My understanding is that DEEP allows, because the state owns it, there is a public area, but it's very small. I don't know how much.
And it's very steep.
It's very steep.
Yes.
So pretty much I would have to be in really great shape to be able to do that. Is that right?
And careful.
And very careful. So two issues. Number one, the amount of time that the man was allowed to speak. Secondly, I think that this is more of a private problem than a town problem. And it sounds like they have begun to put some money and some thought into what they're going to do next. But I think there's a lot of issues that you all need to spend money on. And I think, and I'm just going to say it again, that I think it's a more private issue than a public issue. And I would wish that you would consider that when you make your judgments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kitchery.
Is there, Norm, would you like to speak? Come on up. Name and address, please.
No more. Fifty-four Lake Road. I do live on the lake. I disagree with the last comment. I think the town definitely should be involved. It is private, ninety-eight percent. You heard before, people in town don't even know it's up there. That's why it's been kept clean. Just it's not overused. It's only seventy, seventy-four acres. There is some people that come in on the state beach, but if you advertise it as a town beach, and we've done that prior sessions, it's just too much. The lake can't handle it. Why do we want support from the town? If we apply for state grants, if you have the town helping you or supporting you behind you, it benefits everybody. We pay better taxes like anyone else would because our homes are on the lake. So our homes are valued higher because of the lake. Yes, we get enjoyment out of it. It's our recreational. I paid ten times to stay there than what I pay now for sure. But if we all work together, it makes it better. That's how we got the state to buy the lake and the dam, was through the previous administration working with us. It was owned privately. I only know that I've been there fifty years. So I went through that process when it was sold. The developer that had it with the construction company were barely defaulted on his repair for the dam once he blew it up and his home. So the construction company took the title. Grandfather died. Grandson said, "I don't want the dam to dampen." He said, "I'm going to take it out. If you guys don't pitch in together and buy it, we can be looking at it at dawn." So we worked with the town. We couldn't have done that by ourselves. We worked with the town. We had great support. We got the state to acquire it. I think it was a win-win. To support goes both ways. And you need your administration and town to back up some of these major efforts you take, especially if you go after a grant, a state grant. You just have more teeth. So I do think it's a gem that the town should support, and we all need it.
Thank you, Norm. Any other public comments in person? Anyone online who wishes to speak? Great. All right. We'll move on to item seven under Old Business, which is our monthly report from the Committee on Solidarity. I don't see anyone online for our monthly report, so if there's not anyone, we will move to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. All right. Next, item eight, New Business. So in your packets, now, we've been busy, a subcommittee has been working on putting together this survey with Great Blue Research out of Glastonbury. I want to thank John Dillon and Sean Manning, as well as Dr. Britton and Laurel Steinhauser. We've been, we've been working with Great Blue on this survey on our school facilities. And, you know, I think we have a very good draft here at this point. I know the Board of Education has weighed in. They had some terrific comments and a lot of great feedback that we incorporated into this updated survey that's before you today. So I want you all to, I sent it to you all earlier. I hope, hopefully you read it. And looking to get feedback, see what your thoughts are on this. For those of you who don't know what we're talking about, the School Facility Study Committee, which had met and made recommendations for the future use of our school facilities, including the possibility of closing and repurposing a school or potentially two schools, is what they had considered. This board thought that... This board thought that it would be helpful if we surveyed the town and the residents of town, particularly our registered voters, to find out what they would be looking for in a bonding referendum because no matter what we do, it's going to, it's going to cost some money. We're going to have to bond. And this is, it's not cheap to keep up our, our school facilities. And we have some, some great schools and we want to, we want to keep them that way. So, that's what we're trying to do with this survey. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions, comments, feedback from the board.
I have a question.
Sure.
I, I, I did read it through a good portion of it, but that one hit towards the end with individual options. I just ran out of time. But if I go back and review this, am I gonna find, obviously I know in the plan that came forward from the Facilities Committee, there was, they expected eight hundred and whatever, sixty thousand dollar decrease in not running the additional school. Is that, that number accounted for in these plans or?
We didn't put the exact number. Now, there's two numbers. There was a number if you closed Gildersleeve, and there was a number if you closed Gildersleeve and BIS. So, there were two numbers. And, you know, rather than, it's a, it's an extensive survey already, so rather than put the actual number, what we put in there instead was, there's some wording that, I want to try to find it. This is before any, so we, we give an example of an assessed home of, let's say approximately two hundred thousand dollars and what, what the bonding options would do to your property tax a year. And then we put that this is before any overhead savings from the closing of Gildersleeve are factored in or the closing of Gildersleeve and Brownstone are factored in. So, we, we do highlight that, but I also felt like we might weigh it down by, by additional numbers and, and figures that, to be honest, we don't know how it's all gonna shake out.
Yeah. I mean, the only reason I bring it up is because it's a significant number. You're talking almost a mil, right? I think it's in the ballpark of a mil. So, if you don't factor, I mean, when you look at the numbers across, it makes, keeping, you know, all schools open pretty attractive. And if that doesn't account for the fact that you, you know, I mean, does that, keeping all schools factoring that you're leaving eight hundred and sixty whatever on the date, that you gotta continue to fund as opposed to the other one, the first option where you may be eliminating the eight. So, that's the only thing that caught my eye. I mean, I thought it was very well thought through and the questions. If people actually take the time to go through, we're going to learn a lot in general about what the town looks at and feels. It's just, that was the only thing when I was looking at the numbers that I thought could potentially sway people to look at an option, what they're gonna say is favorable. But maybe not everything accounted for. That was the only thing.
It's, it's a good point. And also, I do want to add that the, the numbers and the data that's in here, I did have conversations with Charles about this, about exactly this. And our thought process, and we were in agreement that we are trying to err on the side of a higher number.
Sure.
Because what I don't want is I don't want a survey to come out and then us to look up the real cost, you know, to actually get some, some hard numbers down and then, and then get sticker shock down the road. So, I personally would rather err on the side of, you know, this is, this is worst case scenario as opposed to, we're gonna have to come back to the well later. And you know what I mean? And so.
No, and that's great. Like I said, you know, all along, I said, when we went after another bond, we put a real number out there so people had a, a sense of how it impacts them. So, this does. It gives a number so they can look at it. And I know it's approximate. There's lots of.
We're still working.
But it gives you a sense of ballparking, where you at least have a general idea of how much of it impacts. So, that's great. That number is great that they, you have as a reference. So, that's the only thing I thought about.
And, and the numbers that are in here now are my approximate, you know, work. And I, they're close, but I, I have a meeting with our financial advisor tomorrow morning and I want him to go through it. He's given us projections and actually what if we were to take out, let's say, a twenty million, thirty million dollar bond, what that would do for the next thirty years and all that. He, you know, he's very good with all that. So, I want him to actually give the, the real number. So, this is, these are placeholders and I just want to.
Yeah.
Stress that. But I, I am with you. And also, we do have some debt that will be falling off at the end of fiscal year twenty-five. We also, I think, mentioned that as well. So, but thank you, Ralph.
I just have one thing. And this is, and John actually brought this up on Monday when we were talking. If you look at page six, question eighteen, it's talking about the first plan. And then at question eighteen, it says, "This plan could also include an additional up to eleven million of necessary cap, necessary capital improvements to the Portland Middle School and High School, resulting in a total cost of fifty-six to fifty-eight million to the town." And when we were talking over table, let's see, page four, we have the table that overall Public School District needs approximately seventeen million in infrastructure. We changed that to not at all aware, somewhat aware. Because before it was, we changed that table from the original one.
Yes.
And I was thinking if maybe we should put that up in that table so people are aware that we are going to be needing this money and for the secondary schools.
So, yeah, so the first question on this is overall the Portland, so what we, what we have here is it says, "Overall, the Portland Public School District needs approximately seventeen million in infrastructure improvements in the next one to three years." I mean, these are, these are facts that Friar and our Sightlines Report have confirmed. So, it's more, if you notice, the, the questions are asking the public, "Are you aware of this?" And it's not at all somewhat aware, very aware and unsure, don't know. So, I, what you're suggesting then, Sean, is to say right now, so we have the first one on seventeen million that is needed within one to three years, and then approximately thirty million within eight to ten years.
Right.
So, you're saying to add a, a third question about, are you aware that the secondary schools need eleven million as well? Which.
Because we're bringing that down at the end.
I, I like that, Sean.
And that was, I was thinking about our discussion we had one day.
My fear was that, you know, we all agree that, and, and the study group spent the time and they looked at all the elementary schools and they admitted that that really wasn't part of their charge. But we all agree that there's, and there's work that needs to be done at middle school and high school too. I was just afraid that people would look at this. I want to make sure they thoroughly understand that there are these other necessary costs that we're gonna have to spend. And if they check, "I don't want to spend that," then are we getting a true, are they getting the true understanding of the cost? And that's prob, that's a good place to put it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think you just want to make a reference so that they're aware of, it's not an additional eleven. It's accounted for in those other terms already. It's not like you have thirty plus that plus eleven. So, it's like, it's just specifically, there is a number for.
Yeah.
When you read the questions, it's worded that way. So, the, there's three modules. There's three, basically, there's three proposals that the reader is asked to weigh in on. And we're primarily focused with the elementary schools. However, you know, I think this board is certainly in agreement that if we can tackle, have one bonding referendum to take care of all the schools so we don't have to go back to voters in five to ten years and say, "Hey, we need, you know, to take out another bond," it would be prudent for us to do that now. So, I thi, I think it's worded well, you know, that, that's accounted for in here. But, and we talked about it on our call the other day. And I think Laurel brought up the same point.
Yes, she did.
And, you know, we're all in, in agreement. I mean, at the end of the day, and, and I, I say this repeatedly, I, I say, you know, the first thing I told Charles when we met was that we need a referendum to pass. We need a yes vote because no matter what we end up going with, what option, we have to do something. And so, whatever that option is, we just have to make sure that we can get it passed. So, if it turns out that the voters in town are not supportive and would not support that secondary school piece, well, I, I think we have to take that into consideration in order to get the yes vote we need on, on what we can get. But I'm certainly with you that ideally, we would be able to tackle all of it in one shot. And so, that's what, that's what personally I would like to do. And I think this board's in agreement on that.
I might, my thought on this was, I mean, you say just using your own home, for example, you have X amount of dollars you're gonna put an addition on your house. And your roof is also in desperate need of repair, but you don't know that until after you put the addition on. You've blown your, you've blown your bank account on the addition, then you got a leaking roof. I wouldn't want to be the husband or wife that finds out that the roof was leaking after they've sold the money on the addition. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. But I think, so I'll, I'll make that change. I'll, I'll reach out to Great Blue.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, good idea, Sean. Any other thoughts?
I like all the intro questions. I, the demographic questions, I guess you'd call them. Because then, as we've talked about in the meeting, after folks go through and answer these three scenarios, you really can then go back and figure out all the fine detail. The ones that's answering it do, they have children in the school system or are they senior citizens? And you really get a feeling for what the community wants. I, I think it's good.
And what's nice about this too is that we'll be able to separate the data based on demographics. So, you know, we've talked about how one of the questions deals with, should we keep the sixth grade in the elementary school model? Or should we move the sixth grade to the high school or the middle school, I should say? And so, we'll be able to look at the responses and actually filtered by those parents who may have kids in fifth grade going into sixth grade. So, I think that will be very beneficial to us when we, when we go through this. Now, I will say, you know, the, the job for us ahead will be on promoting and getting the survey out. And, you know, we're gonna be sending a postcard to every registered voter in town. We'll also have paper copies at the town hall. We'll have paper copies at the library. I took the survey myself. I know it is a long survey and I know I'm probably, I know this stuff, so it's easier for me. But I did take it and I timed myself. It was ten minutes and three seconds. So, it's not, it's not impossible of a survey. And I think that the information that we gain from this is extraordinarily valuable. So, we just have to do our job and promote the heck out of it.
Just tell River East to get an article coming every week for about six issues. We just keep push, push, push.
Exactly. Exactly.
Bias question forty-five, separate than forty-six. Page eleven.
Good question. I did, I went right by that. I didn't notice that.
I don't know.
Good question.
I've seen that on other surveys though.
Yeah.
I see it with my, whenever I have to fill out my stuff for my doctor, it comes in that way. So, I don't know if that's.
I think that's boilerplate and I don't.
Reasoning for that.
Yeah.
I think stuff I've seen it get as well.
Question on first page, number two, current ages of your kid. I think less than one, probably could just say no kids.
What? Uh, no.
No, you could have six-month-old.
Six-month-old kid. Okay. Child.
Maybe.
Born six months.
No, because, no, no, no. Because what happens when you, when you complete, keep in mind.
You gotta do the ages of them.
Is a digital survey. So, when, if you say you have no kids in the first question.
Right.
It just skips question two. You don't even have the option.
Okay, got it.
So, yeah, that's how they deal with that. There's any, any additional feedback on this or is everyone feeling relatively comfortable with, with this at this point?
I know I've been through with a fine-tooth comb.
I know you have.
I'm sure Sean has too, but, you know, I, you said you're, you're doing a little more on it tomorrow?
I'm meeting with our financial advisor tomorrow to talk, and strictly to talk about the, the bonding numbers won't change? The actual range of, you know, the proposals?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking that there is, there is a little bit of a window here. If anybody that wants to take a little longer look at it could still get back to you with some more comments.
Oh, yeah. I mean, yeah, we're, you know, I'm gonna reach out to Great Blue tomorrow about that one change that we discussed. And then, you know, it's going to take, I'm assuming that our financial advisor, he's very good. He's very thorough. But I don't think he's very quick. And I, so I want to, and that's what I want to explain to him tomorrow, is that we don't need, you know, to the penny, you know, it's more of an approximation. And I'm hoping that he can get that quicker for us. But I just want a third party, you know, to, to do that work. So, because I do think that's important. So, and I'm curious to see how my, my math checks out. So.
When you're trying to get this, the approval of the survey to go out? Or the voting approval on this?
I don't know if we need to take a vote on it. I'm looking, I think I'm just looking for consensus on it. I, I don't think at this point, I mean, if, if you'd like to take a vote, I have no problem taking a vote on it once, once it's finalized. But, I mean, we've already allocated the funding for it. I, I want this board to be comfortable with it. I don't think the Board of Ed needs to vote on it, you know. I just, I want an input from the Board of Education, from Dr. Britton, from this board. So, yeah, I mean, I can bring it back if you'd like to have a, and I think what we could do is we could have it for our, our first meeting in November, that, that November fourth meeting. And we could take, if you'd like, we could just have it on the agenda.
That could be, that could be the last go-through before you.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, we, this board has done the most work and is most involved in this that if for some reason the next, after the campaign, there's gonna be a possibly another board on here.
That's a good point.
And they're gonna be thrown into this, like, "That wasn't my problem. This was the previous board." So, if we stick by it before the.
He doesn't want to start all over again.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, we're the ones that we should put it through before the next possible board comes up here.
Yeah, the first.
Yeah, no, I agree. Okay.
Then they can't say anything.
Excuse me. November first. Thank you, Ralph. Okay. So, we'll come back to this on November first, but I think we're, we're like ninety-eight percent of the way there right now. So, yeah, thank you all. I really appreciate everyone's feedback. It, it really made this job a lot easier for, for me. So, thank you. All right. We can move on to refunds of excess payments.
I'll make a motion for a refund of excess payments for VW Credit Leasing Limited, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-two cents and five hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. You got off easy tonight, both of you. All right. So, status in committee reports, I, I'll go through it quick. I'm sure Ralph has some things too. But first to start, you may have seen that they are doing the surface of the track right now. They started yesterday. They did the shop foot and the high jump area yesterday. And then today, they started with the, the track proper. And it's pretty cool to watch. I was up there watching them work. They'll be there, they work seven days a week. So, they'll be there Saturday and Sunday, weather, you know, weather dependent. But please make sure if you see anyone that may be up there, just nobody step on the track right now. It takes at least a couple of days to cure. So, we want to make sure that we have no footprints in our, you know, brand-new track. So, but that's great. It, it should be done by the first week of November. So, that's exciting. Our hilltop road replacement project is moving along great. And we're also doing the water lines, you may recall. We did hit some ledge, which is going to add to the cost a little bit, unfortunately, just to let you know. That's, that's unfortunate that, that that happens. And I asked Ryan, I said, "Well, why?" Ryan will help. And I said, "Why did we hit ledge?" And it's because you can't take the old line out because the old line is still in. The residents still need water. So, we have to, we have to make room for the new line while having the old line in it. So, unfortunately, we hit a little ledge, but it, it should not impact the project. Our connectivity grant, the sidewalks, these guys, these guys are moving. And they're, they're done with the, the original scope of the project. And you may have seen that we are able to do some sidewalk replacement on High Street from the corner of Freestone to Crimson. And, you know, which is great because we didn't anticipate that. I, I was hoping originally that we could go even further, but it seems like we're not gonna be able to do that. But our Russell Avenue Water Project, the bids came in on Tuesday. Uh, the bids came in on Tuesday, yesterday. And they came in a little higher than we projected. Our, the Co-Avenue Pump Station bid closes on Tuesday of next week. So, at our next meeting, I'll have some information. Once, once we have both of those projects back, we'll know the, know the numbers. And I'll be able to, uh, you know, come to you with, with a proposal for how to address any, um, you know, any numbers that, that are, are higher than projected. Brainerd Place, I'll just say I had a Dan Bertram stop by Town Hall today. We had a good meeting with him and to kinda go over the, uh, progress that's been made at Brainerd Place right now. And things are moving along quite well. You may have seen the Starbucks building is now, you know, framed, looks great. And Building E, we got the second story is, is framed, and they're working on the third story next. And they're also doing the foundation for Building F, and they're hoping to finish that in time for the winter. So, they're just rolling right into Building F, which, which is encouraging. There's no, there's no slowdown on that.
I wanted to specify what Building F is.
Oh, Bill, sorry. I see these, I see these letters in my sleep. But, but Building F is the second of the two apartment buildings. Building D is the Starbucks building. And,
E is the first apartment.
E is the first apartment building.
Yep.
Yep. So-
Are they, so does he have the funding for Building F?
He does not have the fun, he has the funding to do the foundation, but he is still working on the financing.
Sorry, the foundation. Okay, I was-
And we will, and I stress this to, to him today, is that this board, we still have to, in order for the financing for, um, the said, the other additional phases, we have to amend the tax agreement. And I know we have met, and, and I told him that we need to have time to review any changes. And so, you know, he needs to give this board plenty of time because, and I told him, what I don't want is to have him say, "Oh, I, you know, I have to get this financed by Friday, and you have to approve, you know, this amendment." And I told him that's not gonna happen. So, you know, he's aware of that, and we're gonna hold him to that. So, just, just so you know, but he does need to get that financing. Uh, still, and, and I'm told he's working on it. It's a tough time to finance right now. It's a tough time for, for that kind of, banks are not really loan-friendly at the moment. And so, um, but, you know, it, it will be moving forward. So, but that's good. It's really encouraged, uh, by that. Couple other things, just to make sure everyone's aware that next Friday is Halloween on Main Street. That's next Friday, October twenty-seventh, from four to six-thirty P.M. So, I hope to see you there. I know John's got a costume. I expect to see, uh, other selectmen in their, in their costumes. So, hopefully you get something good. Uh, there's a 5K race. The Park and Rec 5K race is this Saturday. That's at ten A.M. And so, I hope to see everyone there as well. Looking forward to that. The Veterans Day Dinner is coming up on November eleventh. Once again, Melillies does this every year. They, they volunteer their time, their staff, their, you know, their, their food. And it's, uh, they do such a nice job at, and they do it up at the high school for, for the veterans. And so, uh, put that on your calendar. It's a Saturday night. And I just wanna take a moment just because it's our first meeting since the Portland Fair. And I just wanna thank the Portland Fair Committee for what a job that they did.
They pulled it off.
They really, really pulled it off. And, um-
Yeah.
And I know a number of, of the selectmen here, you know, were there volunteering their time. And, uh, it, it was a really, really good effort, and it, and it paid off. And, and so, I just wanna say, you know, congratulations to them on, on a job well done. And that's it for me.
Can I just add one quick thing? I made a note. I don't wanna forget. Sun, you might know about this. Sunday at two at the Senior Center, Eric Grant's daughter is-
Actually, I didn't know.
She's, Eric, who used to be a police officer in town, um, his daughter did, uh, a research, family research study on her relatives in Portland who are African-American. Uh, and she's gonna give a presentation this Sunday at two, I believe.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, dou, double check, but I'm, I'm almost positive it's this Sunday at two.
Check with Sarah. Thank you. That's great.
Um, her, her mom and dad were both teachers, her grandparents, her mother, her, her mother's parents were both teachers in Portland School System. Arlene Stumpf and Jim Standard.
Oh, wow.
Um, but, no, it, it just sounds very interesting. And I'm, I'm gonna go. I wanna hear her presentation. She's a high school student.
Cool. Very cool. Thanks, John. All right, I'll turn it over to Ralph.
Okay. Um, so this week, it was Park and Rec and Water and Sewer. So, from Park and Rec standpoint, you're already slow a little a ton.
Sorry. I didn't mean to sit here.
But they obviously were busy discussing last minute plans for the 5K and the trick or treat on Main Street. Uh, and started the, well, not started, but continued discussing the plans for the tree lighting on December third. So-
Oh.
That's coming, coming as well. Um, there was some discussion about, um, doing sponsorships for, like, trees and benches at the park. So, that was the initial, that was the first discussion, but nothing really. It was just informal discussion. So, something more will probably come of that. Um, they talked a little about the, uh, capital improvement discussions they had at the last meeting. Um, Andy had gone back and talked with Nate Strickhart just to go through it with him. It sounded like they were on, uh, the same page with most of the items. So, that's good. And, um, the only other thing they talked about was, and I didn't know about, was that they are doing a repair at the Gildersley Gym. It's gonna take about six weeks, and that could potentially impact some of the Park and Rec programming. We'll have to see. Hopefully, they're gonna start ASAP and finish quicker. But, um, it is gonna potentially impact at least the beginning of basketball. With regards to Water and Sewer, obviously, you talked about a few of the projects you already covered. Um, the only thing to note is that, um, talked about the water usage that they need to, I bring it up because, uh, this is always the challenge at this time of year, is you gotta hit the hundred and forty-six million gallons purchased from MDC. So, they have to plan out the last three months of the year to hit that number. And, um, it's nice to think that maybe potentially it's the last two years of having that adventure. Um, the GZA report, the final report on all of the testing that was done for new wells, um, still waiting on that. But that'll have a lot of suggestions of how to proceed. So, that's important, and that'll come out. Um, which ones didn't you cover? I think the clarifier work at the, at the sewer plants has started. Um, obviously, you posted online, and we've heard, obviously, the Steve, the Steve Grant for High Street came in, and so that's great. And, um, the last thing would be that the work on Perry continues to go on. Um, they did the work on the water mains, but I guess gas, gas lines are coming through as well. So, there won't be any final plan to pave over the road until, uh, that work gets done. But it's progressing. That's what I got.
Thank you, Ralph. And actually, you just reminded me. I forgot, I forgot one. We have our ribbon cutting at our Senior Center-
Oh, yes.
On Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So, Tuesday, uh, October twenty-fourth, it's at eleven A.M. And so, we're really excited about that. I, I did post some, some, you know, sneak peek pictures. But, uh, you know, it's really exciting that, to have that project come to completion. So, we're really, boy, that generator is big. I did not expect the generator to be as big. But it takes up, you know, that, where the bocce court was, is basically now a generator. So, I was joking. I said it could probably power the town, but it can at least power a Senior Center. So, very cool. Uh, so, hope to see you there. Everyone's welcome. Uh, all right. Any other status and committee reports? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone in the, Norm? Okay. Does anyone who didn't speak just first? Sorry. Just, okay, you're good.
Noel Mortigan. I should mention it the first time, but I did. And I was sitting there. Gray Hill Pond and Gray Hill Lake. We have to remember why we want the town involved, and they should be aware. That's a water resource in town that falls under our inland wetlands commission, which works with our conservation commission, which a town commissions. By falling under inland wetlands, it helps because it, that lake helps our environment as far as wildlife corridor. It's not just for our individual pleasure. Um, in, protect your environment. It helps with wildlife. It's a water resource. Um, we also worked with the town on fertilize, where we fertilize our property, and we have septic systems. So, we need the town's support to educate people and make people aware of how do we keep our water resources for today and for tomorrow. So, we always need the town's support and backing on that.
Thank you, Norm. All right. Anyone else in the audience? I do see, I think Ellen has a comment. Can we put Ellen up on the screen?
That's a real welcome and strange.
You get your own introduction, Ellen.
Yeah, I just, uh, I wanted to follow up on the, uh, tax abatement issue that is pertinent to Brainerd Place. Uh, I know that's, you know, for a long time, your consideration, and you had to do it, adjust it several times. In this final, hopefully, this final installment, um, not only will I hopefully look at the importance of making sure that the restoration work is done, according to Secretary of Interior standards, but also, here's an opportunity to make certain that we finally get a mixed use development. Without Phase Three, we don't have mixed use. And that was the, that was the thrust of this entire effort, was to get a mixed use development. So, I would suggest that we think hard and fast about how to negotiate completion of Phase Three as a requirement for, um, the tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else in the chat? All right. Great. We'll move on to Board of Selectmen General informal discussion. Does anyone have anything this evening? All right. Move on. I don't have anything for follow-up items this evening, so I will entertain a motion to review.
I'll make a motion, Mr. John.
Thank you, Sean. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.